Good evening and welcome to the June 9, 2025, meeting of the LBUSD Board of Education. Open session is called to order at 6:01 PM. I want to remind you, I don't see any, but if you are, I see one. If you are a student and you wish to speak, please write "student" on the top of your card so you can speak first and don't have to stay. All public comment submitted online was sent to all board members prior to the meeting. Now, would you like to lead us in the pledge? Board member Morgan?
Ready? Again.
Five flagons to the flag of the United States of America. Well, thank you. Thank you. The report out of closed session is, by a vote of four to zero, with all members that were present voting yes, the Board of Education appointed Dr. Jason Glass as the new superintendent for the Laguna Beach Unified School District effective July 1, 2025. The contract for employment will be approved later on tonight's agenda. Also, as most of you know, our terrific acting superintendent, Mr. Jeff Dixon, has accepted a position in Newport Mesa School District. Sad to see Mr. Dixon go. He's helped me tremendously, even taking calls on, once in a while, on a weekend or after hours. And I love his color-coded bar graphs and charts. It's also, I'm also disappointed that he will not be part of Dr. Glass's team moving forward to bring the best possible educational experience for our students, but I totally support his decision. These opportunities do not often come up, and Jeff is always eager to learn and take on more responsibility. Moving from our small district to Newport Mesa, which has almost 18,000 students, will be a challenge that he's ready for. And it will be a great move for his career, and besides that, he doesn't have to move. I wish you nothing but success and a fabulous future for you and your family. And now, all right. Now, public comment on items not on the agenda but within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the Board. Mr. Hills, are there any speaker cards?
Yes, there are.
How many?
For non-agenda, we have three.
Okay. Okay. Would you like to call the first one?
This one, I would make a comment.
If you want, yeah.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I owe the Board, the staff, and the public an apology because, you know, we're trying to run our meetings in an orderly way, and last week, somebody came up to speak at the end of the speaking session, and they hadn't put in their card, and they hadn't gone through the process. And the Chair asked me, as clerk, what my advice was on whether to have that person speak or have them submit their statement in writing and whatnot. And I just personally felt that it would be awkward to tell somebody that was already at the podium to go back to their seat, so I recommended that we make an exception. And I think I let the Chair down, and I let the Board down because I think it was bad advice, and I think that we just have to, we just have to adhere to our rules and follow our rules and not make exceptions. So I just wanted to offer that comment if I could.
Okay, thank you.
So the first speaker would be Shaheen Sheikh-Saddal.
Good evening. My name is Shaheen Sheikh-Saddal. I'm a parent of two in the district. At the May 22 board meeting, Board President Dee Perry unilaterally reduced public comment time from three minutes to just 90 seconds, speaking of following the rules. There was no board discussion or vote, and yet, the time was cut in half on the night when many of our teachers and staff, after completing a full day of work, waiting hours to attend the meeting and speak. They came not only in support of their union reps, but to exercise a fundamental civic right. Instead of being heard in full, their voices were cut short by unilateral decision. To do this to teachers, public servants, who just weeks ago delivered a staggering 90% vote of no confidence in this Board, is more than a misstep. It's a message that their time, voice, and concerns do not matter. Board Policy 9323 clearly states that individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes. It also states that any change to the time limit must be made with Board consent. That consent was never requested, and this decision was made unilaterally by the Board President with no explanation, no transparency, and no regard for the policies that exist to ensure accountability. More than that, this action undermined the civic rights of our educators. The Brown Act exists to ensure public agencies operate transparently and that stakeholders, especially educators, can participate meaningfully in the decisions that affect their work and their students. And that right was just, was not just overlooked, it was actively denied. Board Policy 9323 also states that its purpose is not to inhibit public participation, but that's exactly what happened. Voices were cut short, participation was limited, and trust was eroded. We understand that meetings can run long and have emotions that run high, but rules and processes exist to protect fairness and prevent exactly this kind of arbitrary decision-making. I ask this Board to publicly recommit to following both Policy 9323 and the Brown Act, not selectively and not when it's convenient, but always. The public's trust depends on it, and our teachers, who give so much to this district, deserve nothing else. Finally, Jeff, I want to thank you for 11 years of tremendous service on behalf of all of us parents and on behalf of Fuel. We know your resignation did not come lightly, and that the dysfunction and the hostility of this Board majority has taken a toll on all of us. We respect your decision to step away with integrity, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Steve McIntosh.
Good evening. That's a tough act to follow there. Just, I wanted to say a little bit about Jeff. Jeff and I go back a little ways, right? I mean, when you first got here, I think we started working together on some things, and I have nothing but great respect for Mr. Dixon. He's been an honorable guy, always treated me with dignity and respect, and always going out of his way to explain everything that's going on to keep, keep me informed. Said, "I've got an open, open office. Knock on the door, give me a call, whatever it takes." And he's always been that, so, and for that, I really appreciate it, and I commend you for that because it's not always been the case here at this district. And going forward, I, again, as we said over there, I congratulate you. Congratulations, it's going to be an awesome move for you. Moves are never simple. We've all been in the corporate world and done them, and it's, it's really important for you and your family to, to have change, and I think it's going to be a good one for you. I think it's going to give you some opportunities, a lot more, a lot more to learn, and a lot more for them to gain from your honor and your capabilities. So I applaud you and congratulations and good luck.
Thank you. Steve Brown.
It's been a while. Good to see you, everybody. Let me begin by saying thank you to the Board members for your service to the school district, the kids, and the residents of Laguna Beach. While things haven't always been easy this year, you've tirelessly worked through the ups and downs along the way. The storm that was unleashed when the superintendent was terminated at the end of last year certainly probably wasn't expected when you all walked in here, but you have met its challenges head-on. Now, just a handful of months later, you've already quickly landed what appears to be a great new superintendent who brings a broad base of experience at pretty much all levels of education. I'm sure all parents and residents join me in saying they're happy. This unexpected and massive milestone for the district has now been achieved. As if that weren't enough to celebrate, I'm also confident that later tonight, you plan to pass both the budget and the LCAP three-year plan at this meeting. That means by the end of the evening, and just in time for summer break, you will have completed the three biggest governance and leadership milestones of a school board. Of course, this all speaks to top-notch staff supporting a strongly engaged Board focused on crucial governance matters from your elected positions and to meet state requirements. Great job to everyone on achieving these major milestones. Now that summer's upon us and families begin to take vacations, be proud of what has been achieved in such a short time as you look forward to the second half of the year. Finally, I'd like to say a few words to Mr. Dixon specifically, who has led key aspects of the district for a long, long time, kept the financial statements squeaky clean, and done so, and done so much more for the district. You and I have had many discussions over the years, and I want to say I've always found you to be thoughtful, positive, and keenly interested in what residents have to say. Thank you for that approach, and please know it is always appreciated. While I'm disappointed you'll not be part of Dr. Glass's team when he arrives shortly, I and everyone here have certainly switched jobs in their career, so we all get that. Sometimes it's just time to chase your next dream. The good news is that as you chase that new dream, you leverage what you've learned along the way. And here, I am absolutely certain that the strong financial skills you've demonstrated over the years in particular, steering the ship here at Laguna Beach Unified, probably means you've also worked out a pretty decent financial package, and I'm happy if that has occurred, Jeff, and that's fantastic. Thanks for everything, Jeff, and to you and your family, I hope your newest venture will truly be a great one. Thank you.
That's, that's all.
Okay. Look at those again, Howard.
Yeah. Okay. This is, would be Eva Pauling.
This is just for Jeff. Jeff, your departure marks a profound loss for this district. You've been a steady, principled, and deeply respected presence during some of the most challenging years this community has faced. Because of you, our district is stronger, our schools are more stable, and our parent community is more informed, more engaged, and more committed than ever. You've helped raise not just the standards for incredible schools, but what the bar looks like for leadership here. When things were at their most uncertain, you stepped up. You didn't have to, you probably did not even want to, but you did. In one of the most tumultuous chapters this district has seen, you brought calm, you brought trust, and you brought the kind of steady guidance that only someone who knows this district inside and out, as both a leader and a parent, could offer. You led with humility, with heart, the most stoic disposition in the most chaotic of meetings, all with an unwavering belief in what public education can be when we get it right. We are better because of you, all of us, as parents, our teachers, this community, even this Board. And we are indebted to you for the grace with which you took on this interim role and the integrity with which you've always served. Newport Mesa is lucky not just to be gaining a brilliant leader, but an exceptional human being as well. Thank you for everything you've done for us for the 11 years of service and doing it all with such genuine, quiet strength and care. We hope you will always think of Laguna Beach as home. We wish you the best of luck, and thank you.
Michelle Monda.
I'd like to give kudos and thank you to the entire school board for your 5-0 vote for Jason Glass for superintendent. Your selection of a qualified and experienced proven leader will bring about welcome change to the running of the district and the culture that has hobbled Laguna Beach schools for many years. What a nice departure from other superintendents who used our district as training grounds for the job at outrageous salaries. Finally, someone who justifies the expense. I find it fascinating that Fuel members and supporters of the old failed regime are still fighting the new school board so hard. I hear you want to recall current school board members after less than six months on the Board when they just selected an amazing superintendent. I hear you are angry and blaming these members for actually interim superintendent Dixon leaving. Let me give you a few facts. The new Board majority had selected an experienced, qualified, and loved former Laguna principal for interim superintendent. That wasn't acceptable to Fuel. They insisted on someone of their own choosing. They stated the 213 written comments to the Board by staff and parents wanted Jeff Dixon, and their haranguing kept up until the Board selected him to keep the peace despite no prior experience or qualifications as superintendent. While this was happening, Dixon was applying for his new job. It was posted in March with the posting closing in April. Could this ranker be the reason he's leaving? He did not sign his contract to be interim acting superintendent until April and only after he agreed to a mentor, because, again, let me say this, he was not qualified to be superintendent despite Fuel pushing him. So it would seem that he was already looking for another job while he agreed to be acting interim superintendent. Coincidentally, April is also when former Superintendent Valoria's availability to access and access to direct staff for questions ended. Thanks to Public Record Act requests, we know that communications between Board members and Dixon were cordial and respectful. The people creating chaos and acrimony have been the very people who now say the new Board members are behind Dixon's leaving. The facts point in the opposite direction. Dixon is leaving for his own reasons. I wish him well in his new position, and I'm hopeful that other assistant superintendents will follow him. A district of 2,200 students projected for next year with only four schools does not need four assistant superintendents. We do not need the bloated staff that we currently have. It is my hope that Superintendent Glass will create an environment of transparency, accountability, and competency. If you're not for that, I suggest staff members start looking for new jobs. Let's spend the projected $90 million on students and getting them backed up to grade levels, perhaps within class tutors. We need to make the classroom the focus of our expenditures. We need to return Laguna schools to the former excellence as schools for which people moved to Laguna. Again, kudos to the Board for their unanimous selection of Jason Glass, and I'm really looking forward to the future.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it, okay. Now we will move on to reports. First, CSEA.
Good evening, Board members. CSE concluded their negotiations on Friday, but due to the limited timeframe before the end of the school year this Thursday, we will be unable to complete the ratification and voting process to bring it before you until August 19 at the Welcome Back Breakfast and the All PD Day. Additionally, we will have a end-of-the-year taco party, first time for us, to celebrate CSEA, where we will honor one more time our Classified Employee of the Year, Paula Farino from TOW, and celebrate Alex and Diego for their remarkable 25 years of dedicated service to our students and the district. We wish them both a joyful and well-reserved retirement, but I know that there's going to be a lot of sad kids and staff, including me, at El Moro, but they deserve it. We will also take the opportunity to recognize Jeff for his exceptional, okay, I don't want to cry, contributions, transparency, leadership, and fairness throughout his tenure here and through the negotiations process. Jeff has been instrumental to our progress, and while we're deeply saddened by his departure, we sincerely wish him all the best. Newport Mesa is fortunate to have him, and his leaving represents a significant loss for our district and our staff. You have been amazing regardless what one person says, you have been amazing. You are well-respected by all staff, and you brought a lot of continuity during these times, and we appreciate your effort to try to keep things level, and we wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitkoff, Labufa.
Good evening, Board. I want to start first of all just thanking Jeff Dixon. I have never in my life met a man with more integrity, a man that I believed in and could trust in a, in a, in a job. We've been through a lot of negotiations together, and never once did I question a word that he said in those meetings. And I want to thank you for keeping us afloat over the last five or six months or how long it's been. I don't know if we could have made it without you. And the staff is truly, truly bummed that you are not going to be part of our staff anymore. You're a part of our family. We wish you well, and we'll always be here for you. And I just, I just want to thank you for everything, and I want to thank you personally for just being a friend. It's, it's been an amazing ride, and I wish you all the, all the best. Labufa also finished our contract negotiations. We got done a week prior, so we were actually able to vote on it. We vote unanimously to ratify the contract proposal that will be coming to you on the 24th, I believe, so we look forward to that. It was, you know, negotiations are always challenging, but we worked through it like we always do through the IBB process, and it was, I think, very successful, and we look forward to that. We also want to just congratulate Kelly Shear on her retirement, and she's going to be another person that's going to be very difficult to replace in her position, and she has done an amazing job with CTE, CCA. And I know that because I work with her almost on a daily basis, and my class would not be what it is without her and her grant writing and everything that she's given to us. So she is surely going to be missed more than I think most people will know, so we've got, whoever comes in has got quite a, quite a job to replace there. So thank you, Kelly Shear. And I'm sure Dr. Glass is, is watching or will watch this, and I had the opportunity to meet him the other day, and it was a very positive meeting, very short. I look forward to meeting with him over the summer. But I do, you know, want him to know how important a role this is that he's stepping into, and I know he's been in big jobs like this, but I want to be candid about the challenges that are coming in. You know, we face a deeply divided Board that has been, a lot of distrust amongst staff and the Board, and there's going to be a lot of, lot of work ahead to repair those, those trust issues. We believe in a strong leadership, and in this Office is critical. We advocate collaboration, restored professionalism, and keep focused where it belongs in creating a safe, supportive, and thriving learning environment for all. I look forward to working with him during the summer as well, as, as well as everybody else, and hopefully this is going to be an amazing time for our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to have reports from district staff and the principals' end-of-the-year report, and let's just kind of go around the room. Should we?
School resource officers.
Oh, school resource officer first, of course.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Dan Lopez, one of two school resource officers. With me today is my new partner, Spencer York. I promise you, he's, he doesn't bite that hard, I promise. So with that being said, we have a lot to talk about. We have been super busy as an SRO team, and I'll get right to it. So first and foremost, we had a recent MCI drill where the team also kind of collaborated with the fire department alongside with their drama team being the victims of an accident, and as well as our EMT class who are practicing those skills of scene safety, treatment, and triage. It was fantastic collaboration. Officer Crowe's team was also, Ashley was also one of our dispatchers for the scene, so a lot of hats, a lot of moving around, a lot of hands in the cookie jar. Great, great experience for our students, and looking forward to them hopefully taking their national registry test as EMTs to be certified EMTs in the future. After that, we had our prom over on the hornblower cruising down Newport Harbor. Fantastic event, safe and sane, as we like to say it over at the high school. After that, we also had convocation scholarship night, which was where all of our students from the high school received several scholarships to further their, their educational career, one of which was the Fallen Officer John Koochie Scholarship, which goes towards a student who has an interest in law enforcement or the field of law in general. We also attended the Kinder Promotion, which is always awesome to see the littles. It's always great. It warms our heart after all the craziness in the world. It's just so great to see the littles move on to the next step in their lives, which is a fantastic event. After that, we had a great turnout to all of our open houses. The SRO team actually had to kind of split up a little bit to cover so much ground, but again, fantastic turnout. It was great to meet and really touch base with the families and parents just to have that interconnection within our schools and the SRO program as well. After that, we also had our Chalk Helmet Safety Event where kids learned the importance of wearing helmets, got size for helmets, and also just learned a little bit more extra about the importance of wearing it while riding bikes, scooters, and such. And, sorry. And next up as well is our brand-new e-bike course we had this past Saturday. I'm very happy to report that we had 25 students attend along with their parents, so we were able to give them all the new updates in regards to e-bike safety laws through the state, but not only through the state, but also with Laguna Beach Municipal Codes. We're taking the opportunity to kind of give it a buffer time. All those new laws have gone into effect, and changing classification of bikes, and gives parents the knowledge and know-how to figure out what bikes are legal on the road and which ones are considered electronic motorcycles where students would actually have to have a M1 motorcycle license to ride. So it was a fantastic event, and we're hoping to make that the new standard for all of our kids here at Thurston prior to the start of the school year, and hopefully making that mandatory for every school year, just like we have for our car registration because we all love that, making sure they have that every year so that way that knowledge is fresh in their mind. We're hoping to drive down any e-bike accidents or incidents down to the ground with, pardon the pun, but with that new class and making that an annual requirement. And then last but not least, we're very excited for our upcoming promotions and graduations. We're working effortlessly, I'm sorry, tirelessly, sorry, I've had one cup of coffee, so bear with me here. We're working tirelessly to make sure everything's safe and ready to roll and having all the resources available. But last but not least, from a personal note and coming from my heart, I'm just super excited to see what's coming up next. We're super invested with the SRO program and the fantastic partnership we have with our district and all of our admin heads at every site. So thank you so much, and last but not least, thank you so much to Jeff Dixon for supporting the program and being a, a voice for us at all times. So thank you so much, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now.
Thank you for being such a valuable part of our schools and our program, and I really appreciate that, that you have the parents involved with the e-bike training. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a great night.
Should we go this way? Dr. Mayberry?
Thank you. So earlier this, earlier this school year, the district presented a mid-year update on the district's three goal areas, and then the school site principals also shared updates on their priorities and goal areas for the, for the school throughout a few other meetings. At our last meeting, a couple weeks ago, we did an end-of-year update as our district level goals, and so this evening, the school principals are going to present their updates from their respective sites framed around the context of those three district goals. And so this, this presentation is really a part of our ongoing commitment to maintain coherence and alignment across our schools and our grade levels as kids move up and down, move up and advance through each grade level, which is really essential for students to have a very strong educational experience. And so I'm excited to have our school, our school principals share a little update within each of the three goals, and, and then I'll pass it along to them.
Thank you. Okay.
Our goal area number one is in the area of college and career readiness skills, and this focus focuses on the development of college and career readiness through meaningful collaboration, creativity, communication, critical thinking, and problem solving, and is directly in alignment with our learner profile. Before going into our results, I think it's important for us to give just a brief overview of what our multi-tiered system of support, or MTSS, is for our students because it's grounded in many of the goals that we're working on this year. MTSS is a system that uses support in predictable research-based programs and systems to respond to student needs based upon a frequent data analysis. MTSS is designed to be a working system that's fluid and responsive to our closing, closing the achievement gaps for our students as well as behavioral gaps, which we've all focused on this year. We want the goal to be that all students are meeting grade-level standards and expectations. At the tier one level, which is the base of that pyramid, you'll see that all students receive core instruction that's focused on grade-level academic and social-emotional competencies. Tier two, which is that middle level, students are those who need additional support to intervene and meet grade-level standards. This intervention support is targeted at skill-based levels so that the students really get exactly what they need to close that gap to move them into tier one instruction. And the tier three students, or the red tier, the top of our pyramid, are generally performing two years below grade level and need intensive support in order to close achievement gaps. Many of these students are also Many of these students are also receiving extended services through our individualized education programs or IEPs. Tier one instruction is given to all students during their core instructional blocks. And at the elementary, a daily time of approximately 30 to 60 minutes allows our staff to give students whatever I need, which is called our win time. And this is where we focus on pulling them out or pushing in to support tier two and tier three or enrichment this year to target their academic levels. At times, our tier three students may need some additional intervention beyond win time. And then this will include pullouts in other areas of the school day or after school. Some of our elementary highlights this year in goal area one included our continued work in, with a focus on our multi-tiered system of support. Our robust data cycles were also used to, to look at formative assessments and analyze our student progress. Those occurred at approximately six to eight weeks. We redistributed our MTSS teachers as well as our instructional aides to work with students that needed both tier two and three support as well as enrichment this year. And we had a continued focus on the LBUSD learner profile areas to make learning more engaging and relevant for our kids. This slide represents our beginning and our end of the year iReady results indicating significant growth throughout the year. Again, we used our win time to close achievement gaps as well as provide enrichment for our kids. Our teams worked with students during our progress monitoring cycles and analyzed those formative assessments to target skill-based needs. In generally, in general, we look at what we call the 80-15-5 model, being right on target for progress and we are right within the zone for our language arts progress this year. We will continue to focus on increasing tier one proficiency across all grade levels with best-first instruction during core ELA blocks and through that targeted instruction during win time in the continued year. Most of our students performing within the tier three again are receiving those IEP services and 504 services as well.
Good evening. And like the slide before, which showed us information about our ELA program, this slide gives the beginning of year and end of year assessment information for mathematics. And the goal being, of course, to increase tier one participation and decrease tier twos and threes. And you can see that we didn't quite meet the 80-15-5, but we, we showed significant improvement from beginning of year to end of year. So even for tier three, you might end up with around 80 students down to around 25 by the end of the school year. We use similar types of learning cycles that Julie just mentioned. We're using win time, we have intervention, and we have our specialists who are working with students who need additional help. We did spend significant time at the elementary level through professional development, looking at inquiry-based mathematical practices. So each grade level had an opportunity to do that professional learning as well as visit schools where there's some model programs taking place. We are also going forward with the math pilot of new instructional materials for the fall, which included some work sort of based off of that same inquiry-based model that we were looking at and trying to then align our material to match with those skill sets they're going to require. And we did, as I said, we did significant work with that, whittling it down to two different opportunities, two different options. And we each, between El Moro and Top of the World, have three grade levels at each school who will be piloting those materials so we can make a decision for the following school year.
All right, thank you, Tom. So I'd like to highlight a few great things in regards to goal one. The first being our involved work around our learner profile. Last year, I reported how we created a list of specified classroom learning experience to help enhance the skills around the learner profile. And this year, we looked to, for ways to try to capture that. And so we started a project called COOL, which is celebrations of our learning and which I will also add as another creative baby by Mike Morrison. These digital portfolios are where students reflect on the growth that they've made during their time here at Thurston. And they look at it academically as well as personally and connect it back to the learner profile. Students share projects that shape them, identify teachers and family members and peers who help support their development, and present stories to authentic audiences that we have of mix of staff and parents. It not only serves as like a capstone of learning, but also an expression of gratitude and confidence. It's been incredibly powerful to see our students articulate these ideas and reflect on how the school community has kind of helped shape that journey. And we look forward to generalizing this pilot with our eighth graders going into next year. Also, something that I'm really proud about is our, the evolution of our advisement and tutorial model. So our tutorial model has been one of our strongest support systems that we have on our site. Most importantly, students value the opportunity to choose what they need, whether it's reteaching, enrichment, or a quiet space to work. And of course, building their independence and agency all along the way. This year, we responded to student feedback by enhancing how we will shift by adding more tutorial time and places some of our advisement classes that we have. And also allow for more flexibility for our students as well as targeted support. And I'll share a little bit more about those structural changes in a few slides. But what I can tell you is that students tend to thrive when they're given voice and choice and ownership of their learning. And you can imagine how successful that can be as they navigate that. In addition, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the sustained, sustained, sustained success of our tier two interventions. We continue to deliver strong results in a very short amount of time. In fact, this year, we saw some of the highest gross since, growth since launching our intervention model. And these short-term targeted supports are meeting students where they are. And our staff have become exceptionally skilled at tailoring these individual supports to student needs. I think what excites us most about how quickly students regain confidence, close gaps, and return to tier one, ready to engage and succeed. And I kind of look forward to sharing a little bit more about this in the, in the slides ahead. Looking at this year's iReady results in comparison to last year's, we are thrilled to share the remarkable progress of our students have made on the iReady diagnostic assessment from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. In ELA, we saw a strong increase in tier one supports. Students growing from 61% to 81, or sorry, 61% to 70, 78% this year, which is a 17% improvement, significantly outpacing last year's 11% gain. In math, tier one students grew from 55% to 80%, which is a 25% increase, which also builds on last year's 18% growth. This reflects not only content mastery, but also consistency and instructional impact across consecutive years. And we feel that some of the key drivers that we have of this success are a lot of reflection of students setting goals and monitoring their progress throughout the year, as well as our, our staff being able to target supports, reteach concepts, provide personalized support through tutorial, as well as address gaps and understanding proactively and within the tier one classroom. We're also very excited to see some of the preliminary CASP results that have been coming in as we've seen a ton of growth, especially with the work from our math team. And some of our early glimpses of that with our ELA results looking to show 77% where students are proficient or advanced in, in ELA and 75% in math, which shows big improvements from the 65% that we ended in last year. So lots of celebrating occurring on this particular growth. Really quickly, as we just take a quick look into the cohort comparison models, we see that our seventh grade made the biggest jump in tier one from 64% to 78%. Tier two rates dropped significantly in both seventh, which went from 26 to 12%, and sixth grade, 18 to 22%. And our eighth grade, tier three improved, decreasing from 12% to 7% with tier one rising to 84%. In math, our sixth grade showed the strongest growth with tier one increasing from 70% to 85%. And tier two shrank across all grade levels, especially in sixth grade and in eighth. Tier three remained low with most grades seeing small or stable percentages between four and seven percent. Important to note, just on the side, is that 9% of our students have individualized special education plans, 50 total, and 9% of our students also have 504 plans, which is 49 total. So that's kind of in the backdrop with these, these statistics. And looking at our TMS academic supports, we continue to be very impressed with the impact of our intervention model with our ELA boost class showing 1.52 years of growth in a semester amount of time, whereas last year the growth was at .83. So there's big improvements there. Our ELA Academy, which is a year-long course, we saw 1.6 years of growth, which is nearly double than last year's where we saw .9 years of growth in there. For our math boost, we saw 1.52 years of growth within a semester's amount of time. And this also rose in comparison to .83 years of growth last year. And then finally, our targeted tutorial model alongside our peer-assisted leaders, peer mentoring support, we've continued to lower our F rates to under 4%, which is 21 students total in comparison to 5% that we had the year before. As we take a quick peek at our tutorial, last year, we asked students for feedback on our tutorial system, which was, was it working? Were their offerings meaningful, among other related questions? And at that time, we were encouraged to find that 90% of our students reported being satisfied or highly satisfied, which is surprising considering a middle school student and how critical they are. Because of how effective tutorial has been, we followed up this year by asking, how would you feel if we had fewer advisement sessions and more tutorial sessions? And nearly 90% of our students supported the idea, sharing that they enjoyed having more choice and flexibility, more interactive, engaging, and socially connected learning time with their peers. And so based on this strong student feedback, we plan to shift from weekly advisement sessions to monthly advisement sessions in hopes of adding an additional 30 tutorial sessions in place throughout the next year. And this change will allow us to expand both targeted academic supports and enrichment opportunities while still preserving that community-building value that advisement has embodied throughout this last year.
Recognize that, you know, this wouldn't be accomplished without the support of the district staff, my colleagues here, and our greater school community and the families that are so supportive in this process, faculty and staff on the campus, and especially the board. So thank you. I'm excited to reflect and share some of our accomplishments. Some of our highlights this year around college and career readiness include 80, 80 of our students completing a CTE pathway. And they were recognized on Thursday, if you remember that. Over 220 industry certifications were earned by students as they participate in pathway courses. Consistently providing access to students around AP placement, advanced placement coursework. A special learning journey we had this week, this year with our teachers was a teacher-led reflective learning walks. And of course, as my colleague Joe mentioned, continual refinement of our tutorial process and how we support students. So just to highlight, before I advance the slides, I want to share that our teacher-led reflective learning walks, thank you to the board for helping us get leverage learning in here to support us in that process. It really caused for 100% teacher participation in one way or another, with nearly 60% of our teaching staff participating in the learning walk process. This is again, a teacher-driven, very highly reflective process that really dives deep into not only instructional delivery, but more importantly, student engagement and how we can improve that and increase that in the walks that we do. So I was super excited about that work happening this year and look forward to continuing that work next year to support our students and their engagement and their learning so that they're not, you know, simply doing school, but they're really invested in their, in their education. Similar to my colleagues, I want to highlight our iReady data, which reflects generally continuous improvement and working consistently to move students out of tiers two and three, as you can see here in our fall-spring comparison data. Just a general, like snapshot of this is it reflects a 13 percentage point climb from the tiers two and three into tier one from beginning to end of the year in both areas of English Language Arts and Math. Also want to highlight that before I dive deep into this advanced placement access data, that we're obviously at the high school beholden to the, you know, the indicators on the dashboard around college and career. And I would, really that reflects in A through G readiness, where 80% of our students have consistently been A through G-ready in the last two years. Our dual enrollment population of 168 students enrolled in dual enrollment classes, that's 19% of our student population participating in dual-enrolled classes. And then of course, our CTE participation rates were, almost 51% of our students on campus participated in CTE courses this year compared to about, you know, 45% a couple of years ago. So consistently, 50% of our students have participated in CTE pathways the last two years. And then as you can see here in this slide, our AP participation continues to be highly accessible. And I want to show you this three-year trend of students by grade accessing AP course. And I know we've talked a lot about, as a school community, about how freshmen are able to access AP coursework at an early part of their high school career. And just as a little bit of a reflective data point, over the last two years, we've had a five-fold increase in freshmen accessing AP courses. And that, it does help to offer, continue to add offerings that are more attractive to the freshmen in an exploratory sense around AP coursework. So new courses like AP Human Geography and AP Computer Science Principles has helped increase that. Also want to highlight that you can see from the chart here that our juniors still continue to hold the largest share of AP activity with about 39% of our junior students really locking down and participating in that, the AP course offerings. And then you can see the falloff of our seniors, which means a couple of things, I think, if I'm speculating. One is a really good thing and I think a healthy balance of a high school experience. And it's that they're accessing more CTE and dual-enrolled courses, which is essentially an AP equivalent at the end of the day when they go through the coursework. Maybe some of them are really packing in their junior year and, and lightening up their senior load. But it's, nonetheless, it's very impressive that we continue to have, even with our, even with our declining enrollment, we're still averaging over, well over 800 AP exams taken every year with our students. So that's our AP data. I also want to highlight the evolution similar to what Mr. Vidal shared around our tutorial activities. We've started out as this essential piece of tutorial, was an essential piece of really supporting our tier two and tier three students. But we've been on a really interesting evolution over the last two years because we also, as a school community, really wonder how we're supporting our students that are looking for some more robust and rigorous learning opportunities. And the evolution of our tutorial has really, it still starts and the focus is on academic support and intervention. But there's other ways that students can access their leadership qualities outside of simply ASB or Student Senate. And that's with club and student leadership. They can access college and career talks through our College and Career Center during tutorial time. We also have teaser performances for the visual and performing arts so our students can be involved in, you know, in that, that aspect of school too. Important thing for the whole student is health and wellness activities during that time. And it's just been great to see us evolve away from more mandatory pieces to places where students can get really access to things that they're passionate about and have interest in, in that tutorial time. But the, the biggest kind of synopsis of this tutorial evolution is really starting with intervention-specific supports for students, but evolving into a robust system of not only intervention, but really great opportunities for enrichment.
In our goal area number two, we will address our social emotional competencies and our self-identity. And at the elementary school, our focus continued to be on addressing social emotional well-being of all of our students with the, with the help of our classroom teachers, our support staff, our wellness teams comprised of our psychologists, our counselors, and our student support specialists, and our site administrators. Our end-of-year results indicate that approximately 90% of our students are within that tier one level, indicating a low risk for externalizing or internalizing behaviors. Approximately 7% are at the tier two level exhibiting moderate risk and receiving some additional intervention. And approximately 3% are at that high risk, receiving more intensive support. Throughout the year, all students focused on our positive behavior support and intervention programs and received our second step lessons and recognized- programs and received our second-step lessons and recognizing some overarching needs with self-regulation with our primary students. Our wellness teams provided some tier-one support through direct lessons pushing into those classrooms. The lessons focused on active listening, self-control, social filters, and maintaining personal space. And I'm sure our secondary principals will appreciate that as our kids come to you. One addition to our goal two area of focus was our career expedition, which was piloted at El Moro, and it exposed our upper-grade students to career talks from several local agencies. It was a huge hit, and we plan to extend this work to top of the world as well as our after-school programs next year. Our tier-two work in goal area two focused on classroom lessons with targeted messages that were based upon our data analysis during those data cycles, specifically behavioral referrals, and we created small group lessons and individual counseling within our wellness team to support these students. Some examples of our small groups include our friendship clubs focusing on social skills, our emotional regulation, coping skills, executive functioning skills, girls empowerment groups, and families in transition. Approximately four percent of our students received that tier-three support, remaining in one-on-one counseling, extended counseling throughout the rest of the year. Well, I could go on and on relative to our staff's work in this area. I'd like to sum up with some impressive numbers relative to the time that our staff has spent focusing on individual students and also collaborating with our teams, which include our parents to help our kids. Our teams have conducted approximately one hundred and ten IEP meetings this year, one hundred and thirty-three student success team meetings, sixty-four five oh four meetings. And keep in mind that this data does not include or account for the time spent in students' attendance meetings, district attendance team review meetings, or informal and formal student-teacher conferences. We had lots of celebrations to report, including a focus on bullying prevention month in October, Unity Day in October, Kindness Month in February, the Great Kindness Challenge in January, Mental Health Awareness Month in May, Wellness Wednesday activities that were facilitated by our wellness team, and lots, lots more.
We all at this table, all the tables are trying to make sure that we are creating environments where students want to, want to come to school every day. And every day is a very high bar. And when you don't meet that bar, it can be tough on everyone, parents, educators. So the question is, are we succeeding in doing that? And you look at the numbers there, they're kind of hard to read. Eighty-nine percent of our third through fifth graders through the Panorama survey are feeling, finding supportive relationships at school. That's a good thing. We have seventy-one percent reporting positive feelings, and we have sixty-eight percent who report challenging feelings. So we do have an opportunity to improve that. And you do that often then by creating agency at schools. We want to find a way to engage students beyond just the classroom. Sometimes the high school is lucky because they have big VAPR programs, really robust athletic programs, big leadership opportunities. So at, at the elementary schools, it's a little bit different, so we're trying to create these things. So for instance, we have a PALS program, which is really a community-based program where there's lots of welcoming activities, like the Peace Path over at El Moro. The Student Council at Top of the World, and the really cool model of the Sea Lion Senate over at El Moro, that's some school leadership opportunity for fourth and fifth graders. And those leadership opportunities might include things like holiday toy drives, Spirit Weeks, school-wide events that they can create and run. We also have like a green team, and the green team then, they track waste data. They are instructing students on how to use the new trash bins, right? With our, with trash and with recycling and with our composting cycle. So we're just trying to create those different ways to make students want to come to school and create more of those positive environment and positive feelings.
Thank you. This year, we proudly opened our doors to the Cove, which is Thurston's dedicated and can be a very lively well space. It's designed to support student mental health and wellness, as well as be a place where students can like recharge and reflect and regulate with some self-care practices. It also can be another place where students find community, especially during breaks and lunches. It's another space for students to kind of hang out, and it's been a bit of a blooming social scene in there. And Ms. Crake, our student support specialist, has done a tremendous job fostering that with those particular students. Our counseling team continues to lead the way in providing tiered social emotional support, and they use various data sources like our LCAP or School Development Needs Assessments, or even our Panorama SEL survey. And they use that information to look for like common themes and then develop classroom lessons to help build, for example, this year, peer-to-peer empathy. In tier-two, our counselors support small groups, peer mediation, conflict resolution, and borrowing a model from the high school, which has been very successful, is looking at different ways to support re-entry meetings for students, especially following like a disciplinary incident. And so that's been very helpful in integrating students back into the community. They've also partnered with the International Institute of Restorative Practices. This is their, this is the fourth year that we've had this partnership, and they've helped launch one of the most exciting new practices, which we call Student Success Panels. It's a peer-led forum, similar to like a restorative peer court, where students recommend solutions that help classmates repair harm after like behavioral infractions. This approach, along with some of these other restorative actions, have been very meaningful, and I feel like they've been a direct contributor to us reducing suspensions by more than fifty percent this year, going from seven point five percent to just under three point five percent this year. We are also very excited to have had an opportunity to connect with Jessica and John Hannigan from Solution Tree. They were able to come out and support a full PBIS audit here at Thurston Middle School. Their visit, their visit included peer interviews with students, parents, staff, and helped us identify both some of our strengths in our program, as well as some areas that we want to grow, get stronger in. Looking ahead, they'll help us kind of refine some of our consistent positive, positive reinforcement systems, build a structure for what we are calling Behavior Academies, and how they can help us reteach expectations across our campus when needed, and also strengthen our tiered data leadership team to better support our tiered approaches, whether that's one, two, or three, and assigned student interventions across our campus. In looking at some of our counseling metrics, a few things that I'd like to highlight in relation to these numbers are the two hundred and fifty-six academic counseling sessions that we've had this year, which is up from a hundred and forty-two last year. Every single student received about a fifteen to thirty-minute, one-to-one academic and wellness conference. So these are not just drive-by check-ins, these are actually truly individualized support meetings for our students. And then how our student contacts overall increased from one thousand four hundred and forty-six to one thousand six hundred and nineteen, reflecting the consistent accessibility and responsiveness to our counseling team. In addition, we've seen that peer mediation increased by over fifty-five percent, from fifty-five sessions to eighty-six sessions this year. And notably, fifty-eight unique students engaged in mediation at least once throughout the school year. Our group counseling also expanded from fifteen to twenty-four students that were served in small group settings. And as I mentioned, this year marked the launch of that student success, those Student Success Panels, which we saw nine restorative meetings going from March till the end of this year. And then, of course, our Cove, our well space, hosted thirty-five unique visits from students. This is a specific one that happens within the school day during class time where they've come to check in and using these moments of calm connection are vital for our students who definitely need to recharge. The five oh four meetings, which rose just slightly from forty-six to fifty, and our SSTs decreased from thirty-five to twenty-six, showing that earlier and more targeted intervention has been supportive. We also saw that our risk screening, risk screenings decreased significantly from thirty-seven to twenty-one, suggesting that more proactive support and wellness education may be helping to reduce that escalation that students might be experiencing. In looking at our twenty-four, twenty-five behavior data and comparing it to years prior, we see consistency in this year's numbers, the orange bar, and how it was better than our initial implementation, which is the green bar across all of the months. That said, we also saw some spring spikes, as we'll call it this year, in comparison to last year's data, which in all honesty, was just in time for us to conduct that schoolwide behavior audit and give us a sense of what might be causing the spike here on our campus. And over the last month, it's been especially nice to see that our staff unanimously came together in wanting to host schoolwide behavior talks, discuss this behavior as a staff, and look for ways to have consistency on more standardized positive reinforcement, also more consistent home-to-school partnerships and communication with families proactively, as well as looking for ways in which we can all consistently reteach a classroom behaviors, which we noticed subtle differences based on expectations from teacher to teacher and classroom to classroom. At a tier-two level, we also felt moved to create more small group executive functioning groups to support students through counseling for students who were not responding to those classroom strategies, aimed at helping students be more proactive with emotional regulation and set specific goals for specific, certain behavior. And then finally, with the support of Solution Tree, we feel that we can have a stronger approach to assisting these needs with our current systems approach that we're taking. And so we look forward to some of that ongoing work potentially.
When we talk about social emotional competencies and self-identity at the high school, I'm really excited to share some takeaway data from the LCAP survey, where we have eighty-one percent of our high school students feel they participate in relevant learning. Eighty-nine percent of students agree that they have the necessary supports to meet their SEL needs. And ninety percent of our students feel that they're, they have effective college counseling and support. Those are really great indicators, but there's still obviously some room for growth for us. And I'm really excited to share with you all about the, the, not only creating the systems of support for students, but also making sure students understand how to access them, which is a big part. Because I think a lot of times we intentionally set out to do something, and then we get results at the end of our journey, and it doesn't reflect what we set out to do often. So a lot of the highlights that I'm going to speak to tonight refer to our student needs assessment that drives our work around this goal, and then how we use the data to implement and monitor systems of support to ensure student wellness, as well as refining, like I said, refine the student awareness of, and access to supports. And this all really has, has been attributed this year in a major sense, not only the classroom cultures that teachers build and spend a lot of time on, our campus culture likewise, that student leadership and our, our adults that work with our student leaders really provide a great high school experience, but specifically, one of the opportunity that our counselors have to work with their caseloads and really have individual and personalized meetings with students. Like I said, it starts, the work starts with our needs assessment. Our needs assessment is given to students within the first six weeks of school, and that really drives our plan for student services. And it's, we try to put the categories in the needs assessment into three spaces: academic, college and career, and socio-emotional. You can see our survey response rate this year was really stellar with an eighty-eight percent student response rate compared to ten, ten percent lower than the previous year. And then when we do what we do with these responses in those buckets, as I like to call them, around academic needs, we highlight the neediest areas and we will focus on them. So in this case, for the academics, students were struggling and really wanted support around time management and organization and study skills. So what we do is we provide them opportunities through our structured system where students will either be told to go to a tutorial to talk about time management and build skills around organization and studying so that we can directly impact the students in need. When we talk about socio-emotional data, we try to categorize our top three needs, and this year, they were sleep, stress management, and mental health. So we really were lucky enough, obviously, with our well space, our counseling and other support staff, to really dive deep into providing supports, perspective, and a set of skills that students can carry with them through not only their high school experience, but on, you know, beyond. Around college and career, we had a big need to understand financial aid and researching colleges. So with over a hundred and thirty college presentations this year on our campus and a lot of workshops around financial aid for both parents and students, we're really successful in meeting that need. But this is all, you know, the kind of larger scope, but what we really like to do also is make sure that our efforts and intentions meet the purpose and the needs of students. And that goes, you know, when we have these workshops and these opportunities to meet more individually or in small groups with students, we really get some key takeaways. And when we ask a question like, "I wish my teachers knew," and we get answers like this, it really resonates because it elicits some really powerful perspective from our students, right? And ultimately, one I really want to call out is that the reciprocity that a teacher and a student have in a relationship, right? I think teacher, as you see that last quote on the far right, "I always want to form good lasting relationships with my teachers." And I think a takeaway that a student shares like that really resonates for teachers because teachers want the same thing. They want to have valuable relationships and the meaningful relationships with the people that are learning in front of them. And we're, with our class size averages and where we're at staff-wise, we're really able to support that process. I also want to just share some other highlights of what comes out of our needs assessment. We have small group counseling around habits for success. We have individual support. We have grade counseling in individual settings. We have SE tutorials, and we have College and Career Center resources that you've heard me speak about, both tonight, but also in previous presentations. One of the big highlights I really love that we're doing that builds off what's happening around career exploration at both the elementary and middle school is the RIASEC approach. So our counselors have been able to legitimately meet with every student in an individual basis and also in a group setting. And it starts with freshmen and their transition to high school. So they'll have an opportunity to meet with both students and parents in that setting. And what it really does is kick off a great high school experience for both the parent and the student. Because I think we need to recognize that while the transition is pretty challenging for students to go from middle to high school, sometimes parents are wondering, "How do I get involved?" There's no more room, there's no more, you know, this, that, or the other thing. And this is a really great open, opener to the high school experience that, that creates a positive relationship with a really important point person in the student's counselor. So the freshman will talk about that transition to high school with their parent. We try to get students to do most of the talking in those meetings because they're the most important person in the room. And then we really focus on the strengths, interests, and challenges that students have, plan personal goals and academic goals, and talk about extracurricular activities that students can get involved in, as well as school supports. And as a freshman, they embark on their four-year planning journey, which is very exciting. And I, I don't want to minimize the RIASEC process where students really reflect on their socio-emotional competencies, competencies and self-identity. Because that helps in their freshman and sophomore years, it really helps build a solid foundation of where they may choose to explore their passions and interests in life after high school. So sophomores, we continue the conversation around their socio-emotional competencies and self-identity through the RIASEC process, and then we enhance conversations around their strengths, interests, and passions. And then we really ask the students in their sophomore year to stretch, right? So if they are identifying in one of these areas in the RIASEC continuum and they enjoy hands-on work, we're going to challenge them to explore hands-on learning opportunities. We're going to challenge them to explore hands-on learning and career opportunities also. Their four-year become, four-year plan at that point becomes a three-year plan. So we hone down on the coursework and what they're going to be taking over the next three years in high school. And we also do a little bit, not to scare parents and students away, but we do talk a little bit about the high-stake testing that is on the horizon, whether it's ACT, SAT, or even some of the AP course considerations. As they go, and, and at that point in their sophomore year, with what they know about their socio-emotional competencies and their self-identity, we really ask them to challenge themselves to align their, their interests with their practice and course selection. So it's a really great conversation, very valuable, robust conversation for them in their own personal growth and experience as a student. And of course, the juniors, we all know about that, you know, coveted junior high school year, high stress, lots of things to be working on and looking forward to. We review their graduate, their graduate and A-through-G status. We talk about any potential summer plans, either for remediation or growth, and we really explore post-secondary options. Because as you've heard me say before numerous times, we want our students to have numerous options when they're done with high school. And that does not always involve four-year college And that does not always involve four-year college and university, but that is a big part of where our students go. But we want to make sure they're aware of all the options that they have in front of them for their senior year as they go. And of course, when they get to be their senior year, those are really one-on-one meetings with the counselors to check in with their academic progress and get them ready for their senior year and what's to come in life after high school.
And finally, our goal area number three is in self-safe, equitable, and inclusive schools. And the elementaries really did a lot of work in this area. Our first area to tackle was chronic absenteeism, and we remained about the same as we did last year at the 9.9%. We succeeded in identifying some barriers of attendance for our students, which may have included students exhibiting some anxiety in interacting on campus, and then created some plans for them to be more successful in wanting to come to school. We had an emphasis on our family engagement, which remained an important part of our work with our traditional and beloved events such as Boo Blast and Bonanza, as well as the addition of some new, what I'm sure will become beloved events, including Camp Rita Lot, which we plan to do again this year, as well as some parent evenings focusing on digital literacy, which was an interest of our PTA and our parent community. We continue to be grateful for our SROs, and we're using them more and more within our school setting as resources to work with our families, as well as our students, to improve attendance and student behavior, or to just be a friendly face on campus. Both of them will be at our Charlotte Web performance tomorrow, so I appreciate that they'll take on and tackle the difficult work as well as just be there as a presence. And finally, we continue our work with student agency as we elevate our involvement with pals, student council, Sea Lion Squad, and Green Teams to make sure that we're creating that environment where students want to come and engage with one another, as well as our staff members.
Perfect. So in looking at some of our chronic absenteeism, our team focused on early intervention and consistent communication. And our attendance team met weekly to monitor data, send outreach, take timely action when students' attendance dropped, and, you know, from like issuing 258 initial letters to 59 follow-up letters to countless phone calls and parent meetings. And so these communications have helped families understand concerns early, as well as allow us as a team member to help look at, you know, proactive solutions and remove barriers from home to school. This layered approach has helped us bring our chronic absenteeism rate from 11.2% to 7.2%, to now this year, 6.1%, which is a six-year low, even going back to pre-pandemic numbers. Looking at our parent engagement with strong partnerships from our PTA and School Power, we've had also an all-time high and doubled our numbers of Lunch with a Wave Rider, which is kind of like our little mini Woodstock that brings families onto our campus, where we get to enjoy food, have wonderful music, thanks to Mr. Wade. Our PTA has also done an amazing job luring families to outside social events, like one at the Marine Room, which I can remember fondly but won't mention, and also leverage some other high-interest opportunities to build community connectedness around Thurston and beyond. We also look to extend our learning opportunities with the support of Julia Budd and her amazing connections at Angels Stadium, where we were able to put together a career trip to Angels, Angels Stadium, where students learned about the various career opportunities that exist within the sports industry. And it was a nice extension from the weekly career talks that we also hope hold on campus.
As we reflect on Goal Three at the high school, we really recognize that all the goals are really intertwined, and you can see it by our highlights here. Of course, when we talk about safe, equitable, and inclusive schools, we want to ultimately enhance student connectedness. We want to have student-driven supports and services. We've talked about our expanded tutorial options, and of course, the varied approach to assess student learning and wellness. And it really comforts me to see the work that we're doing around strengthening our school-wide, multi-tiered systems of support by implementing practices that build a common understanding, assess current practices and refine them, identify areas of growth, and develop collective actions to improve our framework around especially diversity, equity, and inclusion as it relates to the student, academic, socio-emotional, and behavioral experience at the high school. I think you've all seen our LCAP results, but it's really remarkable when 92% of high school students can feel, say they feel safe at school, 88% of them can report a positive environment, 90% of students feel like they have at least one adult on campus that supports them, and 86% say that the staff support equity and diversity within the school community. I'm really excited, as we just wrapped up our Challenge Success Survey, which really takes a deeper dive into the student experience on our campus. We had over 83% response rate, so I'm really looking forward to working with Dr. Keller to understand the results and the perspective that students have shared in that process. And of course, our priority goals targeting individual students and their support across all subjects is really essential in how we navigate our tutorial time. So it's building a system that we have in place that we can rely on to support students to the best of our ability. And I think ultimately, we have an environment where students are supported in all backgrounds. One culminating event for me this year that happened just last week was our Second Annual First Generation Celebration, where we celebrated the accomplishments of our first-generation students completing high school and exploring a variety of options in their life after high school, and their willingness and readiness to carry that responsibility forward, not only for themselves, but on behalf of their family, was a very powerful thing to participate in. We're able to put systems and supports in place. But I think for me, the ultimate compliment to this work is when we see students empowered to take care of fellow students. And that is really reflected in our Laguna Beach High School Student Support Collective, where students are working with students not only around academic support and success, but socio-emotional health and wellness. And they've impacted, we celebrated some of them on Thursday night, and they really have impacted our school community, but our greater community as a whole, our campus culture. They've improved and helped with student connectedness, not only peer-to-peer, but also with their high school experience. They've supported students academically. They really celebrate and enhance diversity, equity, and inclusion. And of course, we hope that that translates into lifelong leadership skills. So in closing, we get the fortune of graduating nearly 200 students this Thursday, and that couldn't be done without the remarkable community that we get to live, work, and learn in, and all of us here. So I want to celebrate that, and I want to extend my appreciation to the board. And Jeff, on behalf of all the principals here, we will be missing you, and we really thank you for your dedication and support that I've been lucky enough to experience over nine years in this district, so thank you.
Let's move on to executive cabinet members. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. I'll be brief. There's a lot of great end-of-year events and celebrations for our students. We've been able to attend a lot of those, you heard, in fact, most of them you heard from the SROs and their report. Very fun and very positive, and it's always a great way to wrap up the year. Really looking forward to the remaining promotion events this week, as well as our high school graduation. The year has gone really fast, and I can't believe we're already there, but we are. And last, I just want to thank everyone for your kind words. The amount of support has been incredible, and Laguna will always have a place in my heart. And whether I'm working here or anywhere else, anytime there's anyone who needs support or assistance in any way, I will always provide it to anyone in Laguna Beach. You helped me raise my kids, so that's something that can never be taken away. So, thank you, and this is just a different Jeff in the same location in a different capacity. And I wouldn't have any of the success that we have had without the entire team and our families and the amazing students we get to educate here, so thank you.
Thank you, President. So I'll be brief as well, it's been a lot of presentations tonight. Again, special thanks to the relationship with the unions for navigating negotiations this season and bringing the two tentative agreements in for a landing. They'll be coming up shortly for board approval. From an HR perspective, we are finalizing staffing for the fall, continuing to fill in the last few remaining vacancies. We're excited to wrap that up soon. And as Jeff shared as well, we're very excited to be celebrating the last week of school with the sites and enjoying all the festivities. And there's a large team preparing for our end-of-year staff barbecue that's taking place this Friday. It's always a great way to just kind of culminate the hard work in the year and celebrate with all staff on Friday in the parking lot. Welcome to stop by, enjoy a burger or a hot dog on Thursday afternoon. And that's all from HR.
Friday.
I'm sorry, Friday, yes. Close.
As I said, a lot of good events happening these past couple of weeks, but one I wanted to point out that was one of my, that was already one of my favorites, was the preschool graduation. It was our first year with the preschool, and it was just so wonderful to see the students go up there, and the teacher shared a little bit about each student and just what their favorite memories, and with this program being a new, a new part of our, a new part of our learning experience for students, it was really exciting to see that come through here at the end of this first year. And then I just want to thank again the principals for that stellar presentation. What I take from there, when I listen to them talk about their schools, is not just the level of excellence that they have and are continuing to strive for, but the continuous improvement. Like every time we see them speak, it's always talking about, "I've tried something new. We're trying something out. This worked, this worked better, this is really good, but we're trying to improve it." And so I think this is, we're very fortunate to have these four leaders at our schools, and I really appreciate the presentation that they did tonight to share this level of detail that they provide for our students and their families. So thank you all.
Thank you for those excellent reports. Now let's move on to governance. Board member reports. Let's try to stay within three minutes, please. Member Kelly?
I'm just going to limit the number of activities, since there were so many activities that we've been going to, and the highlights that I wanted to talk about was the High School Foundation event. I always am grateful to this community that this year raised over $500,000 for our graduating seniors. I think it's a real testament to who we are. It was also impressive as far as that the one, if you took that $500,000, you added the kid who's going to West Point, the $400,000, and then if you added the sports scholarships, which we never talk about, the one kid going to Harvard on a diving scholarship, another one going to Brown, others going to UCLA, it is just overwhelming as far as, at all levels, as far as what this district accomplishes. And so I'm grateful to all the parents for what you do for the foundation. I'm grateful for all the teachers, administrators, for everything you do here. As you can see, the reports were just spectacular, and the thing that I like about the reports the best is how you work together and how it's seamless, and that's just overwhelming. I also had the pleasure of going to the PTA Council's last event, which I thought was just, the PTA does an excellent job, and they've accomplished so much this school year, and I'm just grateful for all the hard work that they do. And I got to spend some time with the resource officers, and that was fun to get to know them better. And they were telling me about that their challenges are at Thurston, so. And I remember as far as that age group, since I taught seventh, eighth, and 12th graders, that those teen years were just the best years and the most challenging years, so thank you.
Okay, I'll try to be very brief. First of all, I want to thank the principals for the reports and another great year. I appreciate everything that all of you are doing. I had a lot of events, but I'll stick also to the same ones that Jim mentioned. First, the PTA Council lunch. I just have to extend my thanks to all of the PTA members who work so hard on behalf of the schools, and it's even evident in the principals' reports that we have these amazing school environments, and it's because of what all our parents are doing. And we have very effective PTA organizations, and I'm deeply appreciative for that. I also went to the Honors Convocation. I look forward to graduation. It was a great event. I loved seeing how excited all the students were to sit together and wait for their names to be called. It was just a very joyous night. And I paid tribute to Jeff at the last meeting to thank him for all of his service, so I don't need to say all of it here. I just want to share again that you just did an exemplary job, and I'm very sad that you're leaving, but thank you again. Okay, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the excellent reports from our schools. We have so many wonderful meetings and events going on right now, and I guess I'll just speak about one. I went to the San Juan Adult School graduation, and walking in, I parked a long way away, I'm walking in with a mom, and she's already crying before we even get to the graduation, and she said, "You know, I'm just so proud of my daughter. She made it through surgical tech school, even though she has a child, and now she's going to, she already has a job, and she's helping our family so much, and her family to come." And I love what CTE, but also our high school graduation can do, and looking at young people going forward into their futures and hoping that we give them the best gifts we can.
Yeah, I'd like to start by saying that I really enjoyed having the principals here tonight, and I listened carefully, and I wish we did this more often, or I wish I'd been able to do more of this since I came on the board. And I have a couple of issues I want to raise with you, why we have you here, a couple of things I want to raise. But first, I want to say that I really enjoyed going to the open house at El Moro, and you ran a great open house, and you've got, the teachers out there are fantastic. Jeff, I really relate to what you said about you've helped me raise my kids, because I run into the teachers that had my kids at Top of the World and Thurston and at the high school. But out at El Moro, I had a chance to spend some time with some of the teachers, and you have a great program you're running out there. And at Thurston, you're right, the music was fantastic. There was a wonderful young lady in the band that did a trombone solo, and I'm a big trombone guy, so I really appreciated that, and had a good time. The awards assembly at the awards program at the high school, I spoke at the convocation back in about 2001, 2002, and was on the scholarship committee, and it's just so great to see that program getting stronger and stronger and stronger, as Mr. Kelly was saying. And, you know, I think that the money is important, obviously, to the kids, to the students, and to their families, but more than the money, when by the time they get there and they're sitting there together and they've gone through school, most, a lot of them for their whole lives together, the camaraderie, the spree decor that the students have, I don't know what the right term for it is, but it was really powerful. It was palpable, you could feel how much they loved each other. And that's the way Laguna Beach High School, I remember it, and so it was wonderful to be there. And the recognition ceremony we had here, you know, anybody that doesn't understand the strengths of these schools, come to that recognition program and watch those sports teams get up there and everything else that is, the level of excellence that's achieved is astonishing. And so anyway, I just wanted to comment that those activities, and you're putting us in a really hard position. We got to choose between the kindergarten graduation and the fifth-grade graduation. I don't know how to make that choice, but I'm working on it. I did want to say on a substantive thing, because we do have you here, that a couple of issues that I'm really interested in, one is very much in the news right now. I'm not raising this because it's in the news, but on the subject of, you know, immigration, first-generation students that we have here, my wife was a first, is a first-generation American, and, you know, I've been watching you know, I've been watching very closely what's going on in the state of California with the Attorney General and Superintendent of Schools on the subject of immigration in the schools. And Dr. Allman, I read your article that was in the Indy about the immigration issue. And I think in the course of, as we go forward, we've really got to, particularly given what's happening right now, but this predates that, we've really got to look at what the Attorney General is saying about immigration issues and what the superintendent is saying about, and what the governor, Governor Newsom is saying about it. And so, I just want to say, I'm going to ask the board and work with the new superintendent to make sure we have a really precise understanding of what the evolving law is that relates to how students and their families are handled as immigration issues come up. The other thing I just wanted to mention very quickly in the same vein is that I have a lot of concern about, and I would just want to refer to the California School Board Association, the California Schools report that the California School Board Association puts out. And in their March issue, I would recommend that all parents who are interested get that edition of it and look at, there's two articles. One is on the Phone Free Schools Act that is going to be implemented between now and 2026. And also, in the same page, it's a really great article in the February, in the March edition of the CSBA magazine about AI. And I noticed that there was an article about AI that also came out. And so, the point I want to make is that I've been reading this book by Eric Schmidt. He was the CEO of Google for 12 years. My son works for him. And he's basically, you know, what I want to say is this. He believes, and a lot of people believe, that we really let down our kids on cell phones and internet. And we put a whole generation in a position of losing their innocence with the click of a button on their phone. And we didn't protect our kids from cell phones. And we're getting around to it now. And there's a guy named H A I D T who wrote the book, The Anxious Generation. And he's saying that if you give a kid a cellphone before they're 16, you are abusing the child. Now, I'm not adopting that view as my view. I'm just saying, that's out there. And what Schmidt and others are saying is that if we think that we got caught off guard by phones and internet, AI is going to be 100 times more challenging for us to protect our kids. And so, I just want to say I'm doing a lot of research on both the immigration thing and on the AI stuff. And I noticed that there have been publications that have gone out from the district about it. And I really look forward to working with all of you to address these issues because I think these are the biggest issues that we face right now.
I think digital citizenship in any matter is very important for our students. And I just, I want to go on record as saying that I don't, I didn't, I don't think, well, I know, I didn't write an article, but I think you were referencing an article that a junior and a senior student had written and submitted to a local publication.
And I'm not criticizing.
I just want to make sure. I want to honor the students that did the work, so.
And I'm not criticizing in any way. It was an interesting article, but what it did, it caused me to say, "We've got to nail this down." And because I was reading what the Attorney General's opinions are and what the superintendent of schools' opinions are, and I'm saying, "We haven't got this really nailed down, and we've really got to do it." But I thought it was an excellent article.
Thank you, Board Member Morgan.
Excuse me. Thank you. I first wanted to also address Mr. Dixon and to wish him well and to thank him. We have a very long history as well. One of the bigger things I remember that was so remarkable was when we were being pined to pay for dirt at the baseball field. And I called you up and said, "Okay, something's going on. We're supposed to buy dirt. That doesn't seem right. It's a district asset. What can we do?" And you and I sat down, and we looked at the budget and looked at where the numbers were. And in a day and a half, there was yards and yards of dirt sitting on the baseball field, which I thought was extremely proactive and just, to me, reinforced the fact that you're a numbers guy. You come at things when you look at the data from a very black-and-white perspective in that sense, with a whole lot of gray flexibility allowed for a live document, which a budget is. But it's also still very clear, nope, this is what we pay for. We should be able to get it. And so, let's get it done. And that's how my mind works. Get in, get it done, get out, and move on. And I appreciate the ability to always come to you with questions and always come to you with a lot of questions. But that's who I am. I have always been that way, and I'm always asking for clarification of those questions so that maybe others think about it as well and can offer some perspective that maybe I've missed. So, I wanted to thank you for that and wish you the best in your next adventure. And I also am sorry to see that you will not be a part of this team going forward because I think there's exciting, exceptional, amazing opportunities in front of us that a fresh set of eyes can bring. But I know that you're going to do great, and I wish you all the best. So, I wanted to also touch base on what you had said with Member Hills with digital citizenship. And I know that's something that I'm extremely excited to finally get some better policies and stronger policies in place. I think, it's no secret, even Dr. Allman's staff that's been here for a long time, Dr. Keller, I have been a very vocal advocate against digital anything for our kids going way back. And I have a programmer now in my family from the same conversations that we had years ago, and the ability to have those conversations on what good citizenship means, what good ethics mean in the digital world, and as a coder, how can you help protect our kids? So, being new to the workforce, this one, it's been really terrific to be able to have some of these resources to bring forward in conversations from the Anxious Generation that School Power hosted that book and all the conversations through the years. So, I wanted to thank you all for that. And it's relevant because graduation being next week, this kid is here in town, and he's programming his little brains out every single day. So, I get to see firsthand what that looks like. I also went to the TOW Open House. The garden was phenomenal. I'm so excited to see the garden thriving there. I have, the garden was there when we were there nine years ago, and I think the first time was, what are we talking, 20 years ago? And it's great to see that it's so robust. I love the tours that they were offering and the fact that as the families approached, they had to take their families on the tour and then end up where dinner was. I thought it was beautiful. And all it did, I think the only thing I can say negatively about it is that it just made me super excited to say, "How come we don't have this everywhere in all of our schools, from elementary all the way to the high school?" Because I know we have such a robust program at the elementary schools. And our focus shifts a little bit in ways that I think we could, I would love to see more gardens. So, anybody who wants to bring forward garden plans, I'm your gal. I know we sat here at Thurston 10 years ago and had a full plan. I think somebody had donated $100,000, but we had put the cart before the horse and had the money and the plan, but not the plan and the 10-year plan, I think was how that happened or something. But it was here at a PTA meeting that we talked about that and really making that garden robust. So, I'm super excited about what that garden path can look like going forward, especially sitting here and whatever I can do to help expand on all of that. Because it was a beautiful, beautiful presentation. I had another really great conversation with Senior Fritz as well, talking about Spanish and language and the awesome impact that language has. He had a big map of the world on the ground. And he was talking about how the students are writing to other students in other countries and how that really opens your mind. As a student myself that lived in Brazil for over a year, the appreciation that it gives you for your own country, your culture, your rules, your guidance, your policies, your politics, is, it's unmatched. And I would love to see more of that coming in, just more, more, more. We do great things, and I just want more. So, I want to thank you all for that. It was absolutely amazing. I went to the Thurston Blue and Gold Awards. Thank you for the seat. Sorry, I dashed in on the left side instead of the right side. But it was fabulous. The celebration of the kids was fabulous. Parents were so excited and so proud. On a personal note, I attended the theater banquet as well as Honors Convocation as well, since I have a senior. To add to Member Kelly's report, there were, it was about a half a million dollars without the West Point appointment, which I think we have almost one every year that goes to an academy to serve our country and to those families, many who I know. I am always so grateful. We are a military family. We've got, we had a Navy submarine captain as a father-in-law, so I understand that and the importance of that. There were 245 awards at that half-a-million, and 133 scholarships were given. So, that was, it was just an amazing, amazing evening. One of the presenters even wrote a song, which was quite uplifting, and everybody was up and cheering and dancing. That was a really fun burst of energy within the evening. I've had many conversations with the new, not many, but I've had several conversations with the new superintendent. I've got several meetings lined up throughout the summer. I'm extremely excited about the vision that he brings. I think one of the comments that we were talking about when I was trying to portray my vision of how I would love to see all of our pathways, not just CTE, but math and science and language and English and all of our pathways, to be so robust from the first day the student touches our school till the last day that they end, to be world-renowned and to have that be what we're known for as a district, not just in Southern California, not just in California, but in the whole state, in the whole country, excuse me. And I think the comment was, "We should be the best district on the globe." And I thought, that comment right there made me so excited because I know my mind is always working overtime. I am graduating my last student on Friday, Thursday. We made our last lunch on Friday, and yes, we still made our kids lunches every day. And we calculated that just in high school alone, that was over 3,000 lunches, because I have four children. And they ate, they took their lunch all through elementary and middle school too. I'm so sorry, but they didn't like the lunch or the lines. They had to get out and play. So, unless it was pizza, chicken nuggets, or one of the Mandarin chicken days or something like that, we made lunch every day all through elementary school too. So, we're talking about probably 20,000 lunches. So, I made my last one on Thursday. But I do think that that history brings a perspective to this opportunity of me sitting here that can reflect back but can also look ahead and can appreciate all of the amazing things that our students have gone through, amazing things our students and our schools have done. I am grateful to all of you. Mr. Vidal's been, this is my second time around with him. He was a vice principal the first time around. But I think that I have a lot of gratitude this week. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, my fellow board members. Now, let's move on to governance, item 7B, public employee contract approval, Superintendent of Schools. This contract is actually on par with other high-performing districts, which we are and want to continue to be, as required by Government Code Section 54953(c)(3). I will orally report its recommendation for the final action for the contract approval. Jason E. Glass, EDD, Superintendent of Schools for a term of July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2029. The superintendent's annual salary shall be $435,000 for 12 months, 245 workdays of full-time employment, plus a longevity payment of $10,000 after four years, and a health benefits package under the terms and conditions as set for all district employees. The superintendent shall earn 24 annual vacation days. The board shall provide the superintendent with a one-time reimbursement of up to $30,000 for relocation expenses upon submission of invoices justifying the reimbursement. The board shall also reimburse the superintendent for housing expenses for a Laguna Beach area home with three bedrooms in an amount not to exceed $10,000 per month for a period of no more than six months following July 1, 2025. During the first year of this agreement, the board shall contract with a mentor for the superintendent, not to exceed $7,500. Subject to prior approval of the board, the superintendent may take a one-month sabbatical during the term of this agreement, commencing with the 2026-2027 school year. The superintendent shall be compensated based upon the superintendent's salary schedule, which is here. Board members, any comments or questions? No? Mr. Hills, are there any speaker cards?
No.
Nope. Okay. Is there a motion then to approve the contract for Jason?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. 7c, approval of pre-employment services agreement by and between the Laguna Beach Unified School District Board of Education and Dr. Jason E. Glass. Board members, any comments or questions?
This is so that he can start prior to July 1 and be available for meetings and input, correct?
Yes. Are there any speaker cards?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the contract for Jason? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you.
Madam President, may I ask that we allow you to finish the motion that you're requesting before we interrupt and say so? That would be respectful. Thank you.
Okay. 7d, approval of the formation of a new ad hoc board committee for the review and potential recommendations to the Laguna Beach Unified School District Transportation Plan. This, let me find my right page here. As you know, we have received, well, I've received a number of calls, I think we all have, from parents who live more out in the Audubon area, and transportation is, they're concerned about lack of transportation to the high school. This has gone on for quite a while. We would like to study other possibilities for getting our students to school because it's our responsibility to educate them. And we can't do that if they're not at school. There are some, a number of new programs going on that use vans or sedans, or they call it multimodal systems, hop, skip, drive, there are some other ones. And they say it's much easier to find a van driver than a bus driver. I also noticed that Newport Mesa, where Mr. Dixon is going, offer transportation for all of their high school students if they live two miles or more from the high school. And they also have, that's to and from school, and also if you are in a special, you know, if you are in sports or something after school, transportation is provided. Our students that live out there are five or six miles away from the high school, so much more than the two miles. And we have other students that are too. Luckily, in town, we have the trolley system. We have the Cal Laguna system. The city has really helped with transportation. But there, we'd like to just work on this. There are some parents that would like to be involved, a member of Durham Transportation, the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, and hopefully one or two students. Just look at what might be possible that might not cost too much money, and then bring it back to the board to discuss and see if there are any recommendations we can make.
Thank you for bringing this forward. I know as a candidate last November, I walked all of Aliso Viejo and talked to several families that were frustrated by the lack of transportation for our students. And because of that, ended up pulling their students and putting them at, I think it's Don Juan, is that the school out there? So, I think it's really important that we at least look at what our possibilities are. I would love to offer myself to be on this committee. I think that it's relevant to the people that I spoke to. And I know a couple of people specifically that would probably be very interested in being a part of the discussion to ensure that their students have access to a solid education in Laguna Beach, which is the ZIPCo that they pay taxes to. So, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Morgan. I also know of several students that dropped out of high school because they did not have transportation. And I hate thinking of that happening. And I know people make fun of me for being on my transportation gig, but I'm not ashamed of that. I want all kids to be able to come to school. I want all kids to be able to come to school.
Yeah, you know, one thing that also we might want to consider in the context of doing this, not as an alternative or in lieu of this, but in addition to this, it might not be a bad idea to think about having a board meeting out there and meeting with that community on their own ground and hearing what they have to say because they don't, a lot of them don't come into here.
Yeah.
So the point is, I would just throw that out there as something we might want to consider doing to connect with them on this and other issues.
I like that idea.
So I'm all for doing whatever we need to do for students who don't live here and don't have transportation. I am curious though, because this has, there is a history of providing transportation and, or questions about transportation. And I'm curious, Jeff, have we talked about providing busing in the past? What have been the impediments to that? Because I, I just feel like putting together a committee, I have no problem with that, but I'm curious about like what, why, why we're doing it, what problem we're trying to solve that? Because I'm sure this is not news to us.
We're trying to get students to school.
Well, I know that's the problem we're trying to solve, but I'm saying that this is not a new problem. So I'm asking for some information about what have been the impediments to solving this in the past.
When, when we've talked about it before, money has been an impediment because it is expensive. So we've saved a lot of money by not giving busing to those students. And then it was also said that we never did it before, so why should we do it now?
So I just want to clarify, we do provide busing all the way out to the Aliso Viejo area, just not for high school. So it's high school kids. However, we did, we allow and we've been promoting the third and zero period bus, which has routes to north, south Laguna and Aliso Viejo. It is not a lack of us wanting to or trying to provide the transportation. So I think I welcome, I would welcome this committee. So I think it's, there might be more of a knowledge gap than there is needs in certain circumstances, but evaluating those, those options and coming up with new or unique ways, I think is a good discussion to have. And I've already, I have in mind a few very interested parents that are engaged in a very positive way around transportation. And so between that and Durham, and I think having a couple of board members be able to hear that information firsthand would be valuable.
Thank you. I appreciate being able to look at the options. And I know for the zero period, what I hear from parents is then they have to get here really early. Also, they have no way to get home. So it isn't, it's something, but not ideal. And maybe we can figure out something better.
Can I ask a couple of quick questions as well? Because I think we kind of didn't do the, we, questions, right? And then other comments and then discussion. In the budget that we're going through later, it does show transportation fees from individuals coming in at $325,000 in 2024 and 2024, '25 and then '25, '26. Is that transportation district-wide for all buses and all students?
So that is the amount for individualized transportation services, mostly for students with disabilities. And that is not the bigger contract. The bigger contract's closer to three to $4 million.
I was gonna say, I thought it seemed a little low, but okay, three to four million. Okay, and I'm not seeing that. I'm not looking at the right one then. Okay, thank you. I move that we form a transportation committee comprised of two board members, the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, a Durham representative, as well as the parent community.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Do we need to appoint those people now since we formed the committee?
Well, you, you expressed an interest and I'm definitely interested. Is, do, any other board members have an issue with that?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Do we need a motion then to appoint you and I to the transportation committee? I move that we, I'm just trying to go back to the business meeting.
We do motions for all other appointments to outside organizations, so it wouldn't hurt to do one for this.
I move to appoint President D. Perry and member Sheri Morgan to the ad hoc transportation committee that will be formed under the board, therefore it must comply with the Brown Act and be public. No, it's not? It's ad hoc?
It's ad hoc, so it doesn't come under the Brown Act. Okay. Informational items. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, information items, instructional services, LCFF, local indicators report, Dr. Mayberry.
Thank you. I'll have Dr. Cannonberg join us here to provide a short presentation on the local indicators, which address the local control funding formula priority areas for data which is not collected by the state. So the state has their priorities that we have to meet through the LCAP. You've probably have seen some of this data in some of the weekly updates, as well as the presentation a couple of weeks ago. This is has, as part of the requirement with EDCODE, we have to present the local indicators as a separate item at the same meeting that we are presenting the LCAP for approval. So I hand it off to Dr. Cannonberg. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Perry and members of the governing board. Tonight I have the privilege of concluding our extensive 2025-2026 district LCAP process with a brief summary of the LBUSD local indicators. These results are shared in tandem with the adoption of the LCAP and reflect our district's commitment to both high standards and continued growth. Local indicators are part of California's accountability system addressing areas where state-level data is not collected. The five local indicators referenced both throughout our LCAP and within our California school dashboard include basic services, academic standards, family engagement, school climate, and access to a broad course of study. LBUSD's local indicators are embedded within our three district LCAP goals addressing college and career readiness, social emotional competencies and self-identity, and safe, equitable, and inclusive schools. Metrics aligned to local indicators such as annual LCAP survey data also help to evaluate progress towards meeting these goals. LBUSD's local indicators, along with state indicator metrics comprised of data such as student academic performance, graduation rate, and chronic absenteeism rates, inform LBUSD's status in meeting the eight state priority areas that you see here. As we have shared throughout our board reports this year, the California school dashboard evaluates LBUSD's annual progress across all state and local indicator areas. Although our 2025 dashboard will not be released until later this fall, we are pleased to report that once again, all of our local indicators seen here on the dashboard will show standard met across all five areas, just as you see here along the bottom. It is important to note when looking at our overall California dashboard performance, the state evaluates not only overall student outcomes, but also data specifically pertaining to our significant student groups. It is essential that throughout our LCAP development and implementation processes, we are intentional with the provision of supplemental services, supports, and resources for students within these populations to address continued achievement and opportunity gaps. The first local indicator is basic conditions. This year, we once again are pleased to report 0% of teacher misassignments and 0% of students without access to instructional materials. Additionally, all of our schools are in good repair. The next local indicator, implementation of state academic standards. Our self-assessment ratings show nearly all academic content courses are at full implementation of state standards. The exception is mathematics, currently at initial implementation due to the adoption of the new California math frameworks, which continues to be an area of focus for professional learning. Family engagement remains a priority area both at the site and district levels. Based on annual survey data, parent and guardian satisfaction with communication, opportunities to participate, and parent education offerings continues to improve. Parents and guardians also indicated their desire for hands-on workshops addressing academic content areas, as well as events specifically geared towards supporting student athletes. Both of these preferences will help to inform next year's menu of parent engagement options offered through our schools, as well as the family resource center. Much of our school climate data collected through our annual survey is featured prominently through our LCAP goals, actions, and performance metrics. While we see high rates of student satisfaction in key areas, we will continue to strive for improvement through an emphasis on the integration of our LCAP goals and related actions in conjunction with our learner profile progressions and personalized student dashboards. One of the distinguishing features of LBUSD is that although we are small in size, we offer a robust range of courses for our students. We look forward to further expanding our advanced placement offerings this coming fall. Our commitment is to provide access to high-quality classes in not only core subject areas, but also in visual and performing arts, world languages, and career technical education. Thank you to the governing board for your enthusiastic support of district programs and services, which drive our performance in LCAP and California dashboard areas. Laguna Beach Unified continues to meet all local indicators through strategic alignment with the LCAP, extensive and meaningful engagement with our LBUSD community, and intentional and impactful student supports. We remain deeply and collectively committed to every student, every day, a strong understanding that relationships matter, and a culture of continuous improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cannonberg. Board members, are there comments or questions? Mr. Hills, are there any speaker cards?
No, there are not.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That represents success, not failure.
I thought you did an excellent job when you presented a couple of board meetings ago, all the intricacies of this and so the overview tonight I'm grateful for. And you did it very nicely.
Thank you. I know I've sat on a couple of these LCAP meeting groups and I know that there's a lot of work involved. Thank you.
Next, Dr. Mayberry, approval of the 2025-2026 local control and accountability plan. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Or Hills, are there any speaker cards?
No, there are not.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the 2025-2026 local control and accountability plan? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. You didn't have to say anything, Dr. Mayberry.
Aye.
Okay. B, approval of the 2025-2026 all funds final budget, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Perry. Since our last meeting where we shared this as an information item, I had received some questions, which I forwarded it to the entire board, or Victoria forwarded it to the entire board today. I appreciated those questions, but I'd like to reiterate kind of how I left the last information item is this is not a static document. So questions even after tonight help inform the business office with how we discuss and share the information related to the budget. So they're always appreciated from the board and community. And I'm excited to report that this is a positive budget that provides the flexibility I think the district wants for the next coming years and allows us to meet all of our financial obligations and maintain a positive fund balance.
Any discussion?
I have a couple of just things I wanted to point out. So, because I asked a lot of the questions about the budget and I think that the point of some of those questions was to understand clarity also. As I said, I like to ask questions, so I understand. And I appreciate the timely response today. The Prop 28 Arts and Music and School Funding, you had indicated that we're going to have a new, another report on that later. Dr. Mayberry?
Correct. Next month, it'll be in the July meeting is what it's planned for. And that is an annual requirement to bring an expenditure report for Proposition 28 every year, based on the prior year's expenses.
Those funds that were in that account or that fund, right? That's using the right terminology, are the funds that had, there was like a three, I don't know, I can't remember where I saw that. It had a $3 million line item, is that right? Oh, here, capital outlay. Capital outlay budget, $2 million down from $3 million due to completion of one-time improvements in Laguna Beach Performing Arts Facilities Funds. That was on page 22. So is that, are those funds from the same fund? That's probably a question I don't think I understood.
No, great question. So, and it's confusing because the funds that paid for the theater lighting were called the Arts Music Discretionary Block Grant.
Right.
Which really meant it was fully discretionary. And so the board approved us doing the lighting upgrades in artist theater with that money. And in that regard, we got about $1.6 million just for that grant. That was one-time money. Proposition 28 is ongoing and it's about $300,000 a year. It's based on your enrollment. And the reason you see carryover in the fund balance is because the first year, which was last year, we got the Prop 28 funds. If you look back at that expenditure report, which I believe we brought in June, there was $0 spent, so we automatically had carryover. The good news is we know we have three years to spend down that money. So having a little carryover is not a bad thing and provide, in fact, provides more flexibility for the board with relation to establishing what new art programs and services you want to do. Because as I, as we had spoken, you can't supplement existing programs, it has to be new.
So is the, is the grant then, the money that we got for the grant, the 1.6 million, that's a, that was a one-time fee? We used that money and now it's done? Or is there, because this talked about $2 million down from $3 million due to the completion. So what, so what was the original grant of value?
It is, yeah, it was received one time and that's telling you the reduction in the expenditures because we don't plan on replacing the artist theater lighting again this year. Because it's already done. That's why you see that reduction in that line amount.
So is it possible that there's funds left over from that grant that could be used for other facility, like theater or arts improvements? Or that's, it has to be identified specifically of what it was for and used and then done?
Unfortunately, yeah, all that money went to the theater and even beyond a little bit more than that. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to ask you, Jeff, I see that Sheri's got about 30 little pink markers on her budget there. I just wanted to know if while you're transitioning into your new position at Newport Mesa, if you'll be available for her to call you and ask you any of those questions?
Absolutely, and I've offered to sit down with Member Morgan, so, yeah.
No, I did want to say-
We're having coffee next week and the budget.
I did want to say seriously that I didn't give any speeches about you tonight because you and I have already talked and whatnot. But I do want to say that with respect to what you said on this item about it is a living document and you're moving forward, I just want to say for the benefit of everybody here, you've established a really good relationship with the incoming superintendent and he knows his way around budgets. And so I think there's going to be a very smooth transition on these issues as we go forward. And he's going to be able to, he's going to be able to step right into this. And so I just think there's going to be a very smooth transition. I think it's important.
I had one last question that I was hoping you could just clarify because you explained it to me earlier and I must say I'm still a little confused on it. And I know I had asked a couple of other people that are CPAs and stuff to help me understand it. And it was what I mentioned before about the 6.9 million that was being brought forward as a transfer in in 2026, '27. It's page 51 in the budget. And then when you go forward to, if you go back to page, I think it's 42, the line item that's being brought forward only says 3.7 million. And so where was that extra three? Yeah, it was page 43, sorry. Because we have a line item that says other financing sources used 13.3 million for '25, '26. And then in '26, '27, the amount, other financing sources is 3.7. But yet on page 51, and just for, and again, I think it's just for consistency, it says transfers in is 12.2, and then in '26, '27, it's 6.9. When you look at the all-fund summary, you can see the numbers and they all line up. But where is that other 3 million coming? I know you started to explain it to me, so maybe if you can explain it again, that would be great. I know you started to explain it to me, so maybe if you can explain it again, that would be great.
Yeah. So this is a kind of a nuanced response, knowing that this is a budget. So it's just a plan that would still require a lot of actions, especially for transfers of money. What's really important to note is that this is general fund activity. So when you see transfer out of general fund for this coming fiscal year, that aligns with exactly how much we planned on transferring from general fund to Fund 40 for the capital improvement program. In the following year, an option, and we just want to make sure it's put into the budget book, so at least can be a discussion, you could have an option where you could transfer money not from general fund, but from Fund 40, the Aliso Property Reserve, to help pay for some facilities projects, knowing that the second loan issue. And so while that's in there as an idea, it would need to be executed with a lot of board action and discussion. But at least want to make sure it was documented as part of a possibility for the cash flow going forward, that the board and our community was aware of.
Thank you for doing that. Well done.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, did you have more questions?
No, I was giving him a hard time.
Oh, okay. Okay, passes. Thank you. C, approval of Resolution 2508 Education Protection Account. EPA. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. So this was established with the passage of Proposition 30, back when the state was facing a very significant financial crisis. And in particular, was to get additional taxes to help backfill the cuts that were being proposed for education. It was subsequently extended. Prop 30 was extended via Proposition 55 through 2030. And for Laguna Beach Unified, we get about $200 per average daily attendance, so per student. For us, it's almost worth about half a million dollars, and it must be spent on classroom instruction. So when you look at that expenditure report, it's just assigned for classroom teachers. Unlike Proposition 28, it could be for existing staffing, which is what we've done. And we have much more than half a million dollars in instructional costs. So that's why it's an easy report for us to bring, but it is required annually through the duration of Prop 55.
It's allocated based on average daily attendance?
Yes.
Thank you for that explanation.
As a reminder, this will be a roll call.
Okay, thank you. Okay, roll call vote. Oh.
I moved.
Second. Roll call.
Member Kelly?
I agree.
Member Malcheski? Member Morgan? Clerk Hills?
Yes.
President Perry?
Yes.
Item 10, Instructional Services. Approval of an agreement with Forever Free LLC for multiple student speaking events at Thurston Middle School, Top of the World Elementary, and Elmore Elementary School. And a parent caregiver speaking event on 8/25, 8/26, 2025, in the amount of $10,500. Dr. Mayberry?
Thank you. So in alignment with our learner profile competency, Everthetix Citizen, staff recommends approval of this nationally-recognized speaker and educator for assemblies at both elementary schools, as well as the middle school, as you mentioned, as well as a parent event. This is fully funded by School Power. They'll have a book, a book club to go along with it. The Thurston PTA actually is the one who originally recommended Kemi Joseph, or better known as Kemi J, after reviewing multiple speakers, and felt this message would kind of resonate well with students and parents. So we're appreciative of their recommendation. It's known for really engaging students at the different age levels really well, and we're on empathy, kindness, positive leadership for students. And then school teams will integrate kind of the key takeaways afterwards into classroom discussions or advisory discussions, that you kind of heard a little about today. And then they also emphasize the importance around beginning the year with this type of message with kids, right? And so it's really important, I kind of hit the, you're running with a really important message around being kind to each other and having good positive leadership and relationships. And so, again, the, this is fully funded by School Power Grant, and we're excited to bring this forward to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Can we have invitations to attend?
Who wrote the School Power Grant?
I believe it was Dr. Keller put that together for the team.
Thank you, Dr. Keller. Okay. No speaker cards?
None.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agreement with Forever Free? All in favor? Any opposed? No? Thank you. Approval of Resolution Number 2510, Cooperative Grant Between the Laguna Beach Unified School District and the Department of Rehabilitation Services Through a Transition Partnership Project, TPP, for the period of July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2028. Dr. Mayberry?
Thank you. Yeah, this is the renewal of our Transition Partnership Program, better known as TPP, which you may or may not have heard before previously. As you said, it's a cooperative contract with the Department of Rehabilitation and the Laguna Hills Office and Laguna Beach Unified School District. We've had this partnership since 2007 with them to help. For, this is primarily for students eligible with IEPs and to have disabilities. It really provides essentially post-secondary, ensures that each student has a post-secondary plan. And it provides a lot of work-based learning opportunities, work-based learning skills, interviews, job, like job practice, job search if needed, employment preparation. And it's a really wonderful partnership for our students with disabilities and that also have an IEP. And so we want to bring this renewal forward for you to approve and for the next coming few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? Is there a motion to approve? Okay. All in favor? Oh, roll call. Okay, sorry.
Member Kelly? Member Malcheski?
Yes.
Member Morgan?
Yes.
Clerk Hills? President Perry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to Item 11, the Consent Calendar Action. Any public comment? Clerk Hills? Okay. So approval of Consent Calendar, Item C through U. Do any board members have any questions that would not require pulling any items?
I actually would like to pull Item M.
Item M?
For discussion on the minimum instructional minutes required, and just to have a better understanding of what those look like. I know we got a response, I asked that question earlier today. That was late, and I apologize, because we just gotten the agenda on Thursday night. It's been a busy weekend. If we could pull that and then have it clarified, that would be great.
Pull it and have a discussion? Okay. Is there a motion to approve Items C through P, except for Item M? Any discussion? Okay.
Do we need to appoint the members on Item U? The appointment of SELPA Community Advisory Voting Members? Is that something that we need to pull and do, or is that all-encompassing? Not us, okay. Because I see we have people mentioned, so do we need to approve them? Or are they just approved as far as part of the consent? Okay.
Shall we discuss Item M?
We need to approve consent, right?
I think you did. C through L and through U.
Yeah.
So I can, I can give a little, just a kind of a quick overview. I got your questions, I just, I can, and I can add into the weekly update a response around what this looks like. So this is a, this is a verification that students receive the minimum number of required structural minutes in our district for the next school year, based on ed code requirements. I'm happy to share all those in the weekly update. There, there's a lot of nuances depending on the grade level. But you can see the general ones in the board items around the total number of minutes is really what you're doing. So what staff does, we take the calendars that are approved by the board for the school year, and then we go through all the bell schedules, and we count up all the minutes. And so depending now whether it's a full day, or a minimum day, or a Wednesday, where there's a middle elementary level, where they're a little bit shorter for the staff PLCs, we count up all those minutes and put those totals in that board item to make sure that it meets the minimum threshold, which is there. And so you have different things, like we have to ensure, we have to ensure that they meet the minimum per daily, part of ed code is minimum daily minutes. So in general, it's 230 minutes per day at the lower grades. And then I believe it's around 240 minutes for grades four through 12th. So we check on those, that our spell schedules match with that. And then when they do our annual audit, they'll go back and they look. And that's one of the things that's pretty much every year. One of the things that they check is to, they look at the bell schedules, they look at the calendars, double-check our calculations to make sure they meet that minimum threshold. So this is just approving that we meet the minimum requirements for the state, and all districts do this annual approval.
Thank you. Board Member Morgan, did you have questions about that? Did you have a question about if tutorial was part of the minutes, or something like that?
Well, I did want to know, understand that, because I know I've asked a lot of questions around tutorials, that tutorials are included in the educational minutes. And how many minutes per day do we have at the high school for tutorials?
The, the tutorials advisement, if what we maybe knew years ago as homeroom, right? Those are all, those are all counted as instructional minutes, because there's some type of instruction being facilitated and supervised by a certificated teacher. So by ed code, those are included in instructional minutes. Lunch is not. There's nuances, like we can count up to 10 minutes for passing periods. But if you're talking about lunch, you can't count the beginning and the end. You can only pick one side that you count towards that pass period. Same thing with the snack in the morning, or if it's a recess. So there's, we don't count, we can't count recess at the elementary level unless it's supervised by a teacher. And so there's all those little nuances that I can definitely provide. But they, that, and the question specifically around tutorial and advisement, that counts as instructional minutes, yeah.
But we have about 40 minutes every day at the high school, is that right? I'm trying to remember what my, what our schedule is. And honestly, I can't quite put my finger on it, because I know I think it's like right before or after lunch, or it's before or after seventh period.
It's, you changed a few times recently, I don't think, I'd have to look it up on the website to know the exact minute account, but it's on the high school.
It's 35, it's 35 minutes, Monday through Thursday. Friday, we do not have it, on a typical week.
So that's 140 minutes a week on tutorial, out of the 345 minutes that were over. So we're over about 200 minutes, otherwise excluding tutorial, approximately. Is that right? Based on if we have 35 minutes. So I think I'm just asking, because I know tutorial is, has guidelines where it's supposed to be like for new, not new information, but going back over information. I know there's guidelines on how we can use it. And I'm just curious as to if we need to ensure that we're maximizing tutorial for what it's intended, and that we're careful that we're not easing into using tutorial for all the really fun things that used to just happen at lunch, or would happen after school or before school? Because I know tutorial is used for a lot of different things, not just tutoring, or not just refreshing with the students. And I think it's, through no fault, I think it's just a byproduct of the culture that we're moving forward with, you know, social, emotional, and having a lot of great things that boost the kids up. But I'm just wondering if we're needing to look at that to make sure that we're using those minutes for instruction, and not just fun?
Yeah. I think those are, those are all important questions that I think you may have heard tonight. Like that's what they've been, especially the middle of high school have been, their teams have been looking at and reflecting on, and taking student surveys, right, to see what the right fit is. As far as ed code, it's, whether it's for Tier Two intervention that they talked about earlier, right, where it's extension of the classroom learning, or whether it's something brand new, that they're learning around environmental literacy. It all counts as instruction. One's more Tier One base, where it's much something newer. One's more Tier Two base, where it's intervention. Internally, our priority is for students that need the additional instruction, right? We're trying to get everybody at a minimum at grade level, right? So we're giving them extra instructional time outside of the classroom to get that extra support that they need, that's very targeted and specific. However, we also have secondary needs around like having kids explore topics, or classes, or, or different things that they maybe can't do it within their class setting, right? Like, so we've talked about it in the past around certain topics that might be able, that we don't necessarily have a class for, but could we offer, could we offer something around GIS mapping during tutorial, where kids could do a four-session series to learn about something that wouldn't necessarily fit within the curriculum of a current class, right? So it's a, it's a balance between the two. And the middle of high school have continued to have, that's evolved, and like, what's the right balance? But ultimately, it's about personalizing it, so that students get what they need to be successful, whether that's Tier Two support, or additional instruction around the Tier One level on something that's maybe new or different.
Do we have, don't we have requirements by the, by the state ed code on what tutorial can be used for, that we need to comply with? As far as it can't be new instruction, it has to be refresher instruction?
No. No, just the, the requirements around structural minutes are just that, that there's, that they're led by a certified staff teacher, and that there's some type of learning instruction, something related to the, to the academic social-emotional wellness program.
So if it has to be related to the academic or social-emotional, then we probably need to make sure that we're adhering to most of that, correct? And we haven't wandered too far into the fun zone.
Was there, are you asking?
Well, I just, I know from my personal experiences with tutorial, that it's all over the place, right? There's some, there's some instruction, there's some events that are fun. You had mentioned a four-step, you know, class, which is great. But if a student has to go and do something else that's mandatory, then they can't do all four of those programs. So then they would miss out on something new, which is probably why I thought I understood it couldn't be new instruction. So I can go back and revisit that through ed code. But as far as you understand, there's no restrictions on what tutorial can be?
What was the question?
As far as you know, there's no restrictions on what tutorial can be used for?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And I think, and I think, again, the important thing is, I think, hearing them speak tonight around like really trying to get the student voice and their interests into there. If they need additional supports, they get that. And if they don't need, they're doing well in their classes, which a lot of our kids do. What are the other ways that we can expand their learning and their thinking so it makes them engaged and interested in coming to school each day?
Thank you, that's great.
Thank you. Are you good with that? Great. Okay, our next regular meeting is July-
We need to approve M.
Sorry, thanks. All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve Item M of the Consent Calendar.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The next regular meeting is July 24th, 2025. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor?
Aye.